The agents to the flag in the United States of America and the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. All council members are present except for Councilman Eckhoff. Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall over there. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests. Item A: Approve agenda as submitted. Item B: Receive and place on file notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C: Receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D: Approval of minutes of the regular meeting on November 17, 2025, as on file with the city clerk's office. Item E: Approval of the treasure report of claims in the amount of $559,356.15. Item F: Approval of vision landscape claims in the amount of $80. G: Approval of Boswell reported claims in the amount of $7,498.04. Item H: Approval of BPW reported claims in the amount of $1,433,973.02. Item I: Approval of pay request number three in the amount of $170,056.20 to Building Crafts Incorporated for the WPC grit improvement project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Resolution number 7673 entered into an agreement with Viking Industrial Painting for the replacement of the existing PAX PWM 150 mixer in the South Water Tower located south near Southwest Street and Mulberry Avenue as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K: Resolution number 7674, executing the agreement renewal to maintenance agreement number four for the period of January 1, 2026 to December 31, 2026, and the certificate of compliance regarding all roadway snow removal and/or surface maintenance with the Nebraska Department of Transportation as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item L: Resolution number 7675, executing the annual certification form for the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the period of October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025. Item M: Resolution number 7676, executing the year-end certification of city street superintendent form. And item N: Resolution number 7677, appointing Jason Moore as the city certified city street superintendent. Anybody need any clarification or pull anything off?
I have two, Mayor. Item K is in King and item L is in Lincoln. I just want clarification on both of them.
Okay, fire away.
For item K, so I want to break it down into two different things. So item K, I think there's some misinformation been floating around in the community about what we own and what we don't own, what we're responsible for and what we're not responsible for as far as the city streets. And I wanted to ask Tobias if he would just clarify that, a little bit of that on item K. I thought this was a good opportunity to do that. And then on item L, I think it's important that people understand how much money do we actually get for this and how much money we actually spent. And Tobias, if you'd just break that down on both of those, that'd be great.
Sure. So item K is the annual maintenance agreement we do at the state. If you look on page, must be the last page of the attachment, their attachment C, it lists what roads we're talking about. So it's corporate limits to where it turns from two lanes into four lanes on Highway 77. And so basically it lists out the highways that run through town, shows you how many lane miles those come out to be. Those are all owned by the state of Nebraska, and then they have an agreement with the city to maintain those roads. If you want to, you can get into argument as to what maintenance means. It's supposed to be surface maintenance, snow removal, those types of things. And then what the state does is it says you have 31.38 lane miles of highways running through town. They pay us $2,030 per lane mile. So that's how you get to the $63,741.40 that they pay us each year. That number has not changed much in 10 or 15 years. It's been pretty much the same number all the time. Do we have an opportunity to negotiate that number? We do not, right? It's, that's the number you're given. At the same time, I can't imagine not plowing the highways, right, today if we just says we're not going to or go let the state do it. I don't think that would go over well either. So we accept their money here, their $63,000, and then we maintain those highways. But again, the state highways running through town are owned by NDOT, and we just simply maintain those part of this agreement. Any other questions on K?
Nope, that explained it. Thank you.
So then if you go to item L, what item L is is annual certification that we need to file with the state of Nebraska each year, hence the word annual, which shows that we spent the state highway allocation dollars that we received on some type of street project. So this year, what we're saying is as part of the highway street STP funds, the highway street buyback funds, we received $286,000 in FY25. And so we need to show that we expended those somewhere on a street project. And we usually pick one project that we have that meets all of their dollar amount. And this year, we picked out the concrete reconstruction on Lincoln Street, which you can see was $745,000, which usually shows how we spent all of their highway allocation dollars that we received onto a project. And so we filed that annually with the state so they know we're spending their dollars back on street projects.
Yeah. Well, thank you. That explains both of those things for me. I appreciate it.
Any other clarifications needed? All right, Mr. McLean?
I'm with the items listed on the consent agenda be approved except and ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Couple of public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification 25-4 to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number one. Public hearing is now open.
So this would be, if you see, it's the Landmark Snacks Redevelopment Project. I'm sure everybody has seen the press release by now. Landmark Snacks has announced they are looking to open a new facility here in Beatrice. We've got about 156,000 square foot building. They're looking at the Schwarzkopf property. Again, that would be the parcel ground the city bought maybe three years ago now, which is just west of Ridgeview Drive that's up there. So west of the hatchery, which of precise fabric, Intuit Metal. Lot Man's looking to buy about 20 acres. We're still working on the plating process and exactly where that will look, but it'll be in the northeast corner of the Schwarzkopf property. So up along where the hatchery is at, up in that area there is what we're looking at. According to press release, he's looking to employ about 150 people at this facility. The assessed valuation, what we've talked to the county assessor, we're looking at about $24 million assessed valuation upon completion. So that's how you do the math, and you come up with about a TIP of roughly $4 million for this particular project.
Questions up here?
No question. Comment?
Sure.
Okay. Let's see, where do I start? First off, I know we're all very proud of them and what they've done. And they came to the city and through LB840 funds, we did what we're supposed to do with that money. And we were lender of last resort to get them started. They've been extremely successful, obviously, ever since they did that. And we continually try to bring in industry from outside, and that's very successful at times, and even more successful is when we have industry grow within our community. This is now becoming a big industry. It is. And I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody around this table. I used to tell them, both those, both those people in that family, we're very proud of what they've done here, and we wish them the best.
Any comments from the public? Okay, let's close the hearing.
May the public hearing be closed at 6:09 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that is pass seven zero. Move on to the second public hearing. A public hearing on acquisition of real property, Leesburg Properties LLC legally described as follows, lots one through three, 10-13, and vacated alley adjacent thereto, except the west 10 feet of lot three, and except for west 10 feet of lot 10, all in block 44, Whittenburg addition to the city of Beatrice, Gaige County, Nebraska, partial number 015171000.
This is a parcel of ground that's near 25th and Scott Street. It's been listed for sale for some time. It is zoned residential. The property owner has looked at zoning a commercial. That didn't go anywhere due to its location. We've had a number of people come in and inquire about acquiring the property and see what they could do there. If everybody recalls, there is a drainage ditch that runs through that property. That is part of Tributary 44, which then ultimately goes all the way up through Hannibal Park and drains a significant portion of the east side of Beatrice, where you have a drainage, like a manual that indicates how close you can build to that drainage ditch in order to make sure you save the integrity of that ditch. We've all seen places where we built too close to the drainage ditch and the problems that causes. And so as part of that, we try to avoid that going forward. That's the reason for purchasing this property, so that we can continue to protect that drainage ditch that runs through there. It largely is an unbuildable property. By the time you put in what our manual says, you have to stay away from there. It gets to be a very small area which you can actually build anything. And so we reached out to the property owner, negotiated a price of $18,000. That's what we brought back to you tonight, that's what we're proposing, is that we purchase it, and then it'll simply sit as part of our inventory, and we'll maintain that ditch going forward.
Comments up here from the public? Come on up.
Larry Wolken, 1921 Irving. I own the property just north of Leesburg. And I know you, and I don't care if you guys buy it, but I know you need it so you can put a parking lot for the apartments, too. Although that's what that guy told me, that was dozing the trees that day. But I'm just saying, if you do vacate that from, it's a platted-out Bell Street on 25th Street to Scott, I'd like to see it vacated, that it's platted out on Bell Street from 24th to 25th between them two properties.
You like it vacated? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's just, it's just platted out.
Correct.
Yeah, and I'd like to see it vacated. If you vacate from the platted-out Bell Street on 25th to Scott, that's all I'm asking. And I'd like to know what's kind of going on then. If it, that, I know the guy was dozing trees down. That's what he told us, that he was wanting to put a parking lot there. So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Are we ready to close the hearing?
I'll just say for clarification, the proposed parking lot that would be for the apartments that are being built there on Crest Drive would be on what is today platted as 25th Street, not on the Leesburg property, not on Bell Street, but on what is today platted as 25th Street. Once the engineers get all done with their review, we'll hopefully bring that to you as proposal. We've been talking about it for a year. Engineers take a little longer than you think sometimes. But that's where that would be located, on vacated 25th Street. But yes, we'll look if we vacate that to look at vacating Bell Street as well. It may require some administrative subdivision on some of your lots, but we can talk about that one. Yep.
Bob?
Yeah?
It's not really part of the discussion about vacating this. It should be noted that an occupancy permit has been issued for those apartments, and there's people moving, have moved in. Thought I'd throw that out there for the public. I know it's probably not part of this, but...
Kinda.
Kinda. It's adjacent.
Mr. McLean, let's close the hearing.
May the public hearing be closed at 6:13.
Your vote, please.
Oh, I need a second?
Second.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Now we vote.
And that passes seven zero. All right, that's the hearings for tonight. We'll move on to resolutions. First resolution is number 7678, adopting Plan Modification 25-4 to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number one, also in parentheses known as Landmark Snacks Redevelopment Project.
I may the resolution number 7678 be passed and adopted.
Seven.
Any more discussion needed? Say nine, your vote, please. And that pass seven zero. Resolution, item B, resolution number 7679, executing a contract for sale of real estate and all necessary documents to acquire real estate from Leesburg Properties.
I may the resolution number 7679 be passed and adopted.
Second.
And any more discussion? If not, your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Okay, we'll move on to next resolution, resolution number 7680, executing any and all documents necessary to release and discharge Lang Enterprises LLC regarding the loan agreements for the partial demolition of 411 Court Street.
I may the resolution number 7680 be passed and adopted.
Second.
In 2022, the city demolished 413 Court Street. As part of that process, we agreed and approved a change order for $26,000 to demolish part of 411 Court Street, which is owned by Mr. Lang. We then signed an agreement with Mr. Lang for him, he signed a loan agreement, promissory note, collateral, everything else, where he agreed to pay the city back the money we spent on his building, and he has now paid us in full. And so tonight, we're here to ask you to release the loan agreement, all the collateral, and mark everything as satisfied.
Any discussion needed on that?
Only that I hope it never happens again. Some waste.
Yeah. All right, your vote, please. And that passes seven zero. All right, now we'll move on to item D, resolution number 7681, executing the service agreement with Merchant McIntyre Associates, MM, for the purpose of retaining MM for services related to finding and applying for competitive and discretionary grants on behalf of the city.
I may the resolution number 7681 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So yes, this is our agreement with Merchant McIntyre. We've been with them since October of 2023. Remember, we first signed about a three-month agreement, kind of feeling everything out, then we signed with them full-time in 2024. A little memo they kind of presented when they were down here the last time is while we've been with them, they have secured $21,655,917 of federal funding for us. Their return on investment has been at 112 to one. We currently have over $11 million in pending applications right now is what we have with them. Couple of things that they want to note that they have secured for us, obviously, everybody's aware of the RACE grant. They did the Safe Streets for All, the ADA Planning Grant for us. They got that one secured. They secured the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, the AFG grant for $160,000. That's what we replaced all the hoses and nozzles with down at the fire station. Our application we have pending now, we have a body worn camera application for about $111,000. We have a congressional direct spending for $782,000 for some equipment at the 911 Center that's currently pending. We have a Safe Streets for All grant of $10.4 million, and that would be for the Lincoln Street corridor. We have an industrial endowment of the arts, Artown grant for $99,000 for one of the welcome signs to complete that project. We have a USDA rural business development grant for $43,000 pending. This would help us create a strategic plan for the downtown. We're looking post RACE grant. And then we have a half million dollar grant pending with the Rural Trial, Rural Tribal Association, or excuse me, Assistance Pilot Grant Program. And this would be for planner design and engineering for a trail from basically industrial park, industrial row out to the hospital for the development of that trail system. Couple of things they're looking at for FY27 would be congressional spending. They kind of look, talked to the congressional delegation to see what they think might be applicable this year. Then we kind of come up with a list and see what moves forward there. Everybody's well aware of the Brownfield Grant. That application's due here, I think, in early January. So we'll work on that one. And then they've got a number of other ones they're helping us with, but those would be the ones that are probably most common. I will let you know that myself and Merchant McIntyre talk every two weeks. We have a standing meeting, and so we go over all the grant applications. They're very, very thorough on what they're looking at. They're very open to, if we find something, to send it to them. They do a very good job. They're looking at it, say, this is what's applicable, this is what not, and then we decide whether we apply or not. The proposal they gave us is for $8,000 a month, which is the same price they've charged us since we started. It would be for a one-year agreement.
You know, when you were saying how much money we have received, we haven't really received all that, have we? Because isn't there a hold on some of that? Or, I mean, I know we're, we're supposed to be getting it, but we actually haven't received it, right?
The only money that we, so we've done the Safe Streets for All, that grant's completed, the emergency, the assistance firefighter grant, we've received that product. You're talking about the RACE grant, we're still waiting on the contract from the federal government, from federal highway to release that grant.
Right.
But we have no indications that the money has not been allocated to us. We're simply waiting on the grant itself.
Okay. I just wanted to, you know, clarify that. I know we'll get it.
Anybody?
Well, if nobody else is. Do you want to?
One, I'm a tree, chip in, chip it. It's January 18th for the Detters brownfield grant.
I think that's one of the top three best decisions we made in the years that I've been here, I think. And all I want to do is thank Tobias, because you dug him out. A few of us prodded you, I know, during those times, but we appreciate you digging that group out. They've done a really good job for us, and really look forward to some of these ones we got for next year getting through. So we appreciate everything you did there, bud.
Thank you.
I think it's just important, just to have an ear to the ground there, and knowledge of what's happening and what's going on. And I just can't imagine doing it another way now. Can you? Going back to the old way?
No, I mean, with the federal grants, and again, federal dollars have been available lately, which has certainly been helpful. But the way the federal grants are written, you need somebody who speaks that language to understand them and know how to work through that process. And they do an excellent job of that.
Do it day after day after day. I know how to phrase things, yeah.
And we still use SIN to write a lot of state grants, and we still write a lot of local grants internally. So this isn't the only layer, but it's one that's part of what we use, our strategy.
And they, and they learn. So they learn from what they've done. I read the first Brownfield grant that they, that we applied for, that they helped us with, and that we didn't get. I read the second one. It is night and day. So the things that we would do if we didn't have them, it's hard for us to know what, what, what the failures were. These people, that's part of their learning process. And so, yeah, it's, it's a win, it's a win-win.
One more thing, and then I'll shut up about this. When they were here in our community not very long ago, they spent some time at Hempster's, and they spent some time with Tobias and I. We drove around downtown and also the industrial site. And what sticks in my mind from what they said when they were here was, they thought it was remarkable that we had so few buildings that were vacant, both here and industrial site. So almost all the communities that they travel in there have way, way more vacant buildings than we do. And we have, we still have a ways to go on vacant everything, but that remark set pretty good with me when they did that. I was pretty impressed that they, they picked us out of the group for that. So I just thought I'd pass that on.
Well, and also 112 to one, that's a heck of a batting average.
It's better than Bitcoin, right?
And I would agree with everybody. There's just, there are so many boxes that you have to check with the major federal grants. And if you miss one box, I mean, you know, they have 10,000 people that apply, so it's real easy to start saying, okay, you missed box three, throw them out. They missed box five and six, throw them out. Well, you know, that's not our, that's not our bailiwick. We're not in that type of grant writing. So I think they certainly have showed their worth, and I think we have to continue to go down that road. Your vote, please. That passes seven zero. The next resolution is number 7682, executing the agreement between the city and the Beatrice Humane Society Incorporated regarding the care, handling, and disposition of animals impounded by the city.
I may the resolution number 7682 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So this proposed agreement with the Humane Society would run November 1st of 2025 through September 30th of 2027. Their old contract ended on Halloween of 2025, so it picks up the next day. And then we moved it to September 30th, so it matches up with our fiscal year. Can't explain to you why we got off a month, but we did. And so we looked to kind of correct that one here. The old agreement, we paid them $32,000 annually between paying them and some, help on some utilities. This proposal would pay them $60,000 annually. What we kind of did, they had asked for an increase this year. They had not asked one previously. We went back and kind of looked at how long had been since there'd been an increase. It had been quite a while. And we said, all right, there, do some more money here. Kind of looked at what inflation had kind of been during that time period if you had done a 3% increase. And we came up with around that $60,000 number. This contract then has a 2% increase in October 1 of 2026. And then the only other change in the agreement is that it says a party shall meet quarterly. We did that for a long time. We kind of got out of it during COVID. But we put it back in the contract that we'll meet quarterly, just to sit down, see how things are going. If there's anything we need to talk about, whether it be the contract or just animal care, anything else is kind of going on. So that's the proposal we brought forward.
Discussion. I think it's really, I think they feel good about it. I think we feel good about it, and we'll move forward. Your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Item F, resolution number 7683, expressing support for the plan of merger between Engage and The Chamber.
I may the resolution number 7683 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Everybody's probably well aware of the merger talks is going on between Main Street, Engage, and The Chamber, and everything else. So we're ready to, they are ready to move forward. The next step is for The Chamber and Engage to merge. And it's a tax reason as to why they're merging, and Main Street and Stake Your Claim are merging on the other side. And if you want to get into the stack of tax purpose, let me know. We'll talk about it. Otherwise, just know it's a tax reason why they're doing it this way. And all along, our, our point has been that they can merge it, like, we don't really have a say in what they do. And you're asking them, why is this here tonight? Because as a sitting member on their board of directors, we have a vote on whether or not Engage should move forward with the merger. They have to, the Engage board director has to approve a merger plan or plan of merger. And since Mike sits on that, rather than throwing Mike to the wolves, right, and having him vote one way or another, we figure we would come here and ask this body then to have basically a vote that supports the next step in the merger process, and that would be approving Engage, Mike voting yes on the plan of merger at the next Engage board meeting, which would then move us forward to the next step.
Any discussion needed?
I think it's important we have a collective vote that says yes, not, not just one vote from Mike.
Yep. I got out of there exactly at the right time. I know that.
We'll strike that comment.
Sorry.
I think it'd be good for that new group to know they have the support of the city of Beatrice moving forward in the funding.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay, your vote, please. That passes seven zero. That ends our resolutions. Well, almost. We got one resolution to go after a couple of ordinances. We need to move on to ordinances. It's ordinance amending section 19-9 of the Beatrice City Code regarding camping.
I may the said ordinance be given number 25-37. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Ordinance number 25-37 by number only the first time, 25-37 the second, and 25-37 the third and final time.
I may that ordinance number 25-37 be passed and approved.
Second.
About a month ago, Mark Pethod approached me and said he having some issues with people who come take a camping stall and then leave without paying, and wanted to know if it was possible to boot, put a boot on them. And I said, well, let's check into it. And so what we're proposing here in this amendment is, the way it would read is if you park on a camping stall and you don't pay, it's deemed to be parking illegally. City Code already says if you park illegally, you can be booted. You get a $45 citation, plus you can be booted. And so this simply just clarifies that if you do pole on a camping stall and you don't pay the requisite fees, you're deemed to be parked illegally, which would then allow the boot. Doesn't happen terribly often, but when it does, you can imagine trying to track one, somebody down for non-payment that's in a mobile home and has left your site. That can be somewhat difficult process to do. So...
How do people pay now?
So they can either call into the office, allow them to do that, and then Debbie helps them over the phone. Some of them still do it old school. They fill out a little envelope and turn it into the camp host with their cash or their check in there.
So we have a camp host?
Sometimes we have a camp host if Mark is able to find somebody who is willing to serve as that, and trustworthy enough. Sometimes we do have a camp host. We don't always have one, but sometimes we do. If you're looking for something to do, let us know. If you're looking for something to do, let us know.
No, no. Never camped at our sites, of course. Just wondered how we.
There's a drop box.
How we do it. There's a drop box. So that is very old school because that was done back in the eighties that way. Not maybe we were, they could do it all online now or something.
We're working on that.
There you go.
We'll work on that one. Thanks.
All right, if there's no more discussion, your vote, please. That pass seven zero. All right, the next ordinance is conveying real estate owned by the city to Calvin J. Weirley.
I move the said ordinance be given number 25 dash 38. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that passes seven zero. Ordinance number 25 dash 38 by number only the first time, 25 dash 38 the second time, and 25 dash 38 the third and final time.
I mean that ordinance number 25 dash 38 be passed and approved.
Second.
We are proposing that we sell what was referred to as 1123 South Sixth Street. Take you back in time, the city demolished this house in 2025. And when we did, we then acquired the property through a donation from who were the property owners, that being Dan and Bonnie Pethod. As part of their agreement, they are to repay the city. Let's take this back. So between the demo and the back taxes, the city has just under $18,000 into this property. The agreement with the Pethods was that they donate the property to us and they agree to pay us back just under $13,000 over the next four years. We then went out for sealed bids on this piece of property and we received four bids back and Calvin Weirley was the high bid at $10,250. So what we're proposing to you tonight is that we sell Calvin this property for the $10,250. Closing will be in about 35 days because state law makes us wait just a little bit. But then that's what this ordinance and the following resolution are for.
Has he given indication as to use?
He has not. Calvin also is currently involved in one of our mode of own programs. So he's acquiring another piece of property here. But no, I don't know what he's looking to do with the property. It's zone commercial, but I can't tell you.
I guess that and the other question I had was that have the Pethods made any payments?
Yes.
Yep, in fact, I think he was in today making a payment. In the snowstorm.
Very good.
Did we find out who owns the?
Yes, we made contact with the billboard, the owner, that is Lamar has owned that one. The, you have to go back in time, the property owner in 2001, four, somewhere in there, signed a 20-year lease with Lamar for that billboard that's there for what I think is a penance of payment. But that lease automatically renews for another 20 years. And so we will make sure we assign that over to Calvin as well. And so he'll get the rent payment off that billboard going forward.
So everybody's kind of looking at me. So I was contacted by somebody that wanted to, was interested in the property. And I went through the whole thing with them and they said, well, who owns the billboard? And I said, well, I don't know. So I talked to, I knew who it wasn't. And so when I talked to Tobias, he said, there's a billboard on there? I assumed it was on the rink, they, they assumed it was on the roller rink of property and it's not. And so I, I just, that's what the, that's what, who owns the billboard? That's what the question was. So I, thank you.
If you ever read one of those leases, they are very much written in favor of the billboard people. There, there is not a way to terminate that lease. You have to give notice and I mean, again, it's a 20-year lease, it's, they're very difficult to get out of.
Slow enough, doesn't make any difference because it's not a bad spot.
All right, any more discussion? If not, your vote, please. That passes seven zero. Now we'll do resolution number 7684, executing a contract for sale of real estate with Calvin J. Weirley.
I move resolution number 7684 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, your vote, please. That passes seven zero. All right. Around the public forum, the purpose of public forum is for the presentation of an item to, by the general public to the city council for consideration later date.